Anne's on her way. John stopped by here a little while ago and he has been doing landscaping at the house. And apparently the bobcat got into the water line, so he's having to dig it up and do some repairs, so he won't be able to be with us tonight. So, again, Anne should be on her way. I would, I would like to hold this. There's another meeting gonna happen at seven o'clock, the Downtown Merchants. They'll be in the council chambers, which is why I sort of set us up in here for now. I would like to have as short a meeting as possible and still do what needs to be done. But there's, some of us wanna go to that meeting and some people's got to repair mailboxes and Bill's got something planned, so let's target a half hour discussion and see what we can get done and if we need more, we'll talk about it then, alright?
Alright.
Fair enough?
Yes.
We have had a request from John to look at two ordinances, one for metal buildings and one for black. And so, I wanted to have a discussion so that Bill's got some ideas of what we're looking for, our council's looking for, and you all have an idea from Bill of what we can do in an ordinance, what we should be doing in an ordinance. So with that, John, you wanna?
Yeah, I've had several of the citizens, especially since we were spending all this money, looking at fixing up downtown and trying to make the city look better, a lot of them said, well, you know, it's just great that you're working on downtown, but they said, look at the town as a whole. It says, you know, there's a lot of buildings in disrepair. Some of them complained and saying that they were unsafe. It's been cleaned up now, but there was one, they had several coolers out front for months. And that was a dangerous situation. They said, well, happens kid gets in it or, you know, gets tipped over on one of them, hurts them. And it's basically, just in disrepair. And if we wanna attract business and if we wanna make our city grow, you gotta clean it up every now and then. And unfortunately, this, you know, we kinda get used to it and don't see it till somebody else points it out to you. And that's basically what happened on the blighted building. We've got a lot of buildings with awnings and, you know, just really in bad disrepair, you know? And I know that we're limited on what we can do, but we do need to see about getting those cleaned up. And then also with the metal buildings is the same way too. Approached about the metal buildings, you know, they look good right now, but what are they gonna look like in five, six, seven, eight, 10 years? And give an example, Billy even pointed out last time I talked to him, look at our barn in the back, you know? And there's plenty of buildings like that in town too. So, I mean, we're not telling them to tear them down, all we're just gonna do is clean them up and make them look presentable. I mean, if we're gonna grow, we gotta look like you can grow. 'Cause I know if I'm riding up here from Roswell or, you know, Alpharetta and I come and I see this stuff, I might not wanna, I might even want to put a building up here, our business up here, but so, you know, we've gotta make Jasper look attractive. And we're working so hard to make downtown look good, we need to make all of it look good.
I agree.
And this, I actually got from the GMA as a model to write the ordinance. And what me and Anne had talked about is all of us to try to give our inputs, just like what he had did on that other one, and then let's come back and work, finish work on it. We don't have to do this tonight, but let's at least get it going. So, that's what, what we're looking at.
So is this blighted and metal buildings?
No, there's two.
Okay.
And what I did is I got a copy of the Swanee, 'cause they really got a really good, efficient one, and it's already pretty well done. I mean, it's really a nice, nice ordinance, and it works out well for them. And all this will address the new construction, not the previous construction. So if we've got new buildings coming in, just talking about giving them the, you know, four sided facade, when I say facades, you can make them look like brick. It's not really brick, it's little thin veneers.
Veneer.
But they look good, and you can make them look good, make them look presentable.
That's completely.
That's correct.
So both of these are for new construction?
Well, the lights for existing.
Okay.
We can't go back to somebody that built a building.
So who are we gonna, who are we gonna leave in charge of the existing buildings we have now that somebody deems that's kinda run down and needs some work done to it? Who are we gonna, who are we gonna appoint to say, you need to go out on top of the owners of this place and?
Yes, we did some, we do our code enforcement.
Well, let me tell you.
What is happening?
Best bangin' answer to that is by telling you what's happened in the past. We did have a property in town that needed cleaned up.
Residential?
Residential, well, it was residential in a commercial area.
Yeah.
And I talked to Bill about it. Bill and I drove out there, looked at it, and he sent a letter, certified mail, and the place has since been cleaned up. Is it perfect? No, but it's, it's, my lawn may look that bad at times, not really, but.
No. Mine may.
So what would start, I guess, to some of our同事 asking, what would be the catalyst for that conversation for the two of you to write out there?
Uh, I did this. I did it under our existing ordinances, under the weed ordinance, and we have one there to do that. There's many areas of public law, of regular general law, that you can do that because you can always sue to abate an ordinance, a nuisance. Give you an example, one time down at, when I was city attorney at Nelson, we had a house that burned, but it didn't burn down, and it sat there, and it sat there, and it sat there, and sat there. Finally, I filed a lawsuit against the owner of the land for the city.
Is that state law, city law?
It was state law.
Okay.
You, if, if I live next door to you and I'm making a mess all over your property or causing maybe rats to run or something like that, the next door property owner can sue to abate a nuisance, anybody can. But in that instance down there, we couldn't ever get nobody to do it because they weren't gonna come back and build. They didn't have the money to build, they didn't have any insurance on the property, and I sued and got a court order, and we went down there with a bulldozer and tore it down. Sent them a bill, of course, the New Berns weren't gonna, well, the people that owned the house were not gonna pay the, pay it, but we, but we went ahead and cleaned it up.
Now, my only concern with this is, is I don't, I personally haven't been contacted by any of these metal structures as, the lack of that. I personally know of one out here across from the lodge that kinda looks like it should be torn down, but my only concern is, is when do we, when do we know when to step in and when do we not to make our, to not make ourself, the city, look bad like? That's my concern.
Well, you just, just confirm what, what needs to be done. If it looks like it needs to be tore down, it needs to be addressed. If it looks like it's dangerous, it needs to be addressed.
If they're not meeting our current codes or the new code, then we would give them the opportunity, I'm assuming, to correct the problem with a certain.
And that's what I did, I took the house on Chambers Street.
How long has that, how long has that kind of been in effect here?
When Otto Newman came to town, whenever that was.
Okay. Well, over for a time.
That building that you mentioned?
And Kirk's question.
One of the buildings that was mentioned.
Yeah, let me make sure, Kirk, what I understood Kirk's question was, when did we get involved with?
Correct.
And that, we got involved with it when a lady on the same street had been trying to sell her house.
So complaint.
And couldn't, so we had a complaint.
No, I certainly understand.
And so obviously, that would be one instance where we step in after a complaint. If there's a building like what we're discussing here, you're looking at, there's not been a complaint, would that fall to Sunny or City Department somewhere to follow up on?
Under what's now existing, I send a letter, and then I also send a notice for the police department to go out and serve them with a copy of it, and then if they haven't complied with it within the, I think it was, wasn't it 10 days?
It would help me if I remember.
I can't remember, but anyway, whatever the day limit was on it.
It did have a, it did have a.
And then, and then what, and what you do, if they don't do it, then what you do is you file a lawsuit and get a court order to either tear it down or get it fixed or whatever.
Hopefully, we won't have to go down that avenue.
And that's the same abate a nuisance law?
Mm-hmm.
So if, just so, just for example, if we, if the city had, if it went, got that far, and the city had to step in and do it, how do we go about recouping our?
Well, you can file it as a lien against the property, but in that particular instance, it would've never got done, if the property owner hadn't done it, 'cause they really don't care.
If you put a tax lien on it.
Yeah, but you still recoup by cleaning it up, by getting. Oh yeah, you can get a court, you can get a court order to do that, yeah.
Okay.
You just can't go out there and just start tearing down.
Yeah, I think that answered the question.
But like, you see a building halfway burnt down, another one with all the windows busted out, doors wide open, you know, there's, there's, that's all stuff you can, shouldn't be that way.
What's the county that'd be on that?
I do, um, I don't remember what it is, but.
'Cause the barn boy is still uncleaned up.
Well, it's about, it's about the same, it's about the same as I, we operate down there at Nelson, that's under the general state law.
So nobody's pushing it, so nothing's happened.
And I agree with you, Tony.
It is a hassle.
Mm-hmm.
They got better, I mean, they worked on it, then it sat there, and then they worked on it a little bit. Now, it's, you know, still.
They took their insurance money and ran it.
It makes sense to me to look at this.
But a complaint would be where you would begin.
Or an unsafe situation.
Or if it's unsafe for, or you, or if the police department thought it was a drug house or something like that.
And we have taken actions on other properties in the city.
Recently.
Recently, because of.
That's been very smooth.
Like it come down?
Owners have, their.
Got to get cleaned up.
Owners are working with this.
Yes.
So, what's the best way to go, Bill? Get ideas for?
I think everybody ought to read the, what, what John's got, and see if it's too harsh or if it's not harsh enough, or if they like it. And then if you don't have copies of what we already have, they can get a copy of that and look, it's really short and sweet to the point what we've got, but.
Have you read the?
I have.
The comfortable is just of what we have in place?
Well, it's much more extensive.
This, you know, this is more comprehensive.
This is a, this is a, you can't compare apples to oranges when you get new cities, because they're not all the same economic background, not at all.
Have you been through this one?
Yeah.
Does it allow us, if a property owner is not?
Like, I've already redone it and put Jasper in it.
Does this one, does this one give us power if a property owner has a property that has a roof that's consistently leaking and there's either a tenant or a business in there that, that we can do something about that, or?
Don't remember, that's all I got to tell you. It's been many weeks since I've gotten it. Like I said, this was, this was a model.
Yeah.
To set up, so we go, that we could discuss it still by. But you need to look at it, see what you think about it, and then you have your own ideas of what you think things might should be. And if y'all wanna see a copy of the county one, I'll get it for you. I think, if I remember it right, if theirs is published on their website.
Yeah. I'll bet I'm sure it is.
As ours.
As ours is too.
If you hold your mouth tight.
Yeah, well, I can get it to work.
How are you?
Good, had a job.
Good.
Oh, you've listened, we're talking about the last day deal.
I got a little wide, too.
Bill, you'll do what you did when we did the brewery where you just kinda rattled and we went open and got in. I can. First of all, it talks about definitions as to what maybe should be an abatement standard. It describes what kind of dwellings and buildings and drug crimes and structures. We don't really have anything that's got graffiti painted on it that I know of, but this also applies for that because in this particular area, I know we got problems with that too. The, uh, the power, the power would be under the city manager or his designated, um, you know, that would start the process, take, I guess, because that's where all the complaints come to anyway. So, or if you got, or if you got suits coming out of a pipe somewhere, I mean, you know, anybody could report that. This particular, this particular ordinance talks about doing it in the municipal court in the form of fines and that kind of thing. I think you probably find that that probably would not be.
Proven.
Harsh enough. The, the state fines are very minimalistic, there's not a lot, 'cause I've read a lot of reading and talking about this. They're just not really high. I mean, they're not affected, a lot of people, like in City of Atlanta, they'll just pay the fine 'cause it's cheaper than.
Right, especially if they're living in California, you got a building there.
Right.
Right, another loss on the property that they're using anyway.
This particular one defines that who's gonna be, whoever the designated is, when they start doing their investigation, then they, more or less write, write a letter or file a lawsuit, whichever one you wanted to do, and have a hearing, a due process hearing, 'cause the owner would have a right to have a due process hearing to see what we say that needs to be done, or what, or what, or the complainant, what they say needs to be done. And then after that, you could, then you use the, or the, use the body after you heard the evidence, or if you had it in the municipal court where the judge heard the evidence, determine whether or not it was structurally unsound or unclean or not fit for human habitation or whatever it might be. Could, or it be repaired in a certain number of days, weeks, or whatever you decided it would should be. And if it wasn't done, what should be the remedy for that? Hopefully, we'll never have graffiti on walls, painted all over everything, hopefully that won't be in my lifetime.
Well, you used to have someone on hospital, I'm sure, that.
Well, that was, that was probably self-induced.
Some of our monthly inspections.
Pickett may have been involved in doing that.
Some of our monthly inspections that we get at our council meeting, we're told how many inspections they do for the month, would they be able to give us any feedback during those inspections?
Sure, you could have, Sunny give that as part of his report, I mean.
We can start having.
Whoever that's.
The inspections that you're remembering, I think, are fire inspections, and it's not, this isn't a fire inspection, but.
But you got, you got.
If you're on the property, yeah.
But you got to take form, I assume, in that too, so.
Yeah, but, and I understand that, but they're on the property doing their inspection, so I'm.
We can add some of the feedback we could actually get.
I mean. We'd be surprised how many building inspections are going on now, so that's, that's an idea. I'll try to get that reported.
Yeah, I came in and inspected my building the other day, but that was the insurance company got me to do it, 'cause they systematically, hadn't been in about 10 years, but they kinda wanna make your ad fires change, you know? But, but those are the things that you're looking for in, in an ordinance, and those are the way they do it, and they use, you really use the municipal court to do that. Give time limits for the date.
If you don't think the municipal court would be harsh enough, then what would our other option be?
Well, the, doing it in municipal court will, could create more of a time period not getting it cleaned up.
Right.
Because if you had the municipal court, they'd have a right to appeal, they could have it in no way, they could appeal it to superior court, and then, so what was, what you should, what would you have done? Forget this process, add that, and just go on and do it yourself and, and don't have to have all these hearings? Save money.
And what they're doing, something like that, say they do decide to demolish a building, they can demolish the building, take it down and send them a bill, and if they don't pay the bill, then they can slide it on the tax.
Right. Be just like an unpaid lanyard.
I mean, really and truly, this is not too harsh of one, but it's a start. We can build on it.
I know, city doesn't have anything to do with this, but I've got a dumpster in my parking lot that's built and uses. We don't generate enough trash anymore because the paper's not printed here, printed over the computer, they don't do the rolling of the papers and all that stuff anymore. So we don't generate enough really to justify having the dumpster, but we still need something. But yet, everybody in town comes and pours trash and, and we're paying for it, just like they think that's a through street. Somebody's gonna get killed up there in my parking lot, 'cause they think that's a through street.
It's kinda like side progress.
Yeah. They come through there going forty and fifty miles an hour. I nearly got run over the other day, but I don't have anything to do with that, but just this, that's just something about nuisance, that's a nuisance.
Yeah.
And it can be abated, and you just pick your poison on how to abate it.
And it can be progressive.
And it can be progressive. You can, you can, you all can have the power and you can start with something, and if it's not really what you think it should be, you can amend it.
Well, if, if we, as council members, we're saying that we have several of these that needs to be addressed. As a council, I, I think we, I think we need to come up with a, with a progressive way to start this process, and if that be a city employee, pick these buildings and then, and have a, have an agenda for, for this week as far as so many to be, to be visited and try your best to get in contact with people that owns these places. Have a starting point, and pick, if you wanna, as a city manager, if you wanna pick how many of these you wanna address in a week, to where we have a starting point, to where we progressively get, if there are that many, I don't know if that's something.
But that need teeth, but that's, I mean, that's certainly.
It's a, it's a start, I mean, I don't know whether Jim thought what I did would work or not. I really told, I think I told you that it would not work, that they just.
Yeah.
Back the letter and throw the trash in.
Downtown merchants are gonna be getting in the chambers.
Okay.
Seven.
Seven, yes, sir.
Sorry, buddy.
But yet, it worked. And I really did not expect it to work. I really thought.
The letter, you come out of, oh.
I really didn't think that.
And I think some people will do that, will honor it and no way, yeah.
Will the letter be, will the letter be as effective, or would it be more effective if you actually send somebody out to my door, I can speak to somebody?
Well, I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't get out of the car out there.
And you wouldn't? And, and there's, yeah, I mean, we're.
I mean, I.
I think we need the paper.
I would have lost.
On Chambers, on Chambers Street. Well, I'll be honest with you, Tony, I mean, it's like anything that's legal, I think the best thing to do is send something certified mail, so you know it's been delivered, it's there, it starts the process, and then they'll then follow up.
Real world, there are some situations where I'd be very comfortable going up, talking to the folks, and expect it to get done, and there's other situations where we're gonna need this policy to do what you're doing.
'Cause like I say, I wouldn't get out, I would not have gone up there and knocked on the door.
Yeah, I know.
And I didn't know what was behind that door.
Exactly.
'Cause the owner of that piece of property don't live, well, he does live here, but he's not ever around.
And that's the thing too, a lot of these properties are renters are in them, and so when you go knock on the door, yeah, sure, whatever.
And it falls on deaf ears.
They don't care.
Yeah.
So the certified letter would fix that issue.
Well, if they're renters, how do you know, how do you know what the correct place to send them?
'Cause you get the.
Off the tax.
Tax.
Tax. Would it be sent to both locations? If it's a renter, could we send it to the owner and the actual physical address?
Well, I did, I actually sent it to three locations on that piece of property 'cause I had three addresses.
I think that needs to be part of the policy. I mean, that way the renter's not sidelined when the.
The renter's not gonna care, you just kinda walk in on them.
Yeah, the renter, the renter's not gonna do anything regardless.
No.
Unless he thinks he's gonna lose a place.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying.
He lives in.
Yeah.
If I was living somewhere, I would turn them on the heads up if there's something going on.
They hadn't took the trash off out there in probably a year, and they hadn't cut the grass in probably two, and, so, I mean, I just, it was a mess. And it backs right up to the housing party.
Right. That's a good start.
Also, I hope we don't have this problem, but if you had a disorderly house of some sort, where the parties were going on all the time, it doesn't have to be disrepair to have a public nuisance, you know, with a whole bunch of kids or, well, like when I grew up, we all parked uptown, we backed our cars in uptown, well, finally they run us out, and then they shouldn't have ever done that because we, at least then, we were being watched after or watched on by the college park. But, 'cause they, once they ran everybody out of town, when they did that, and.
Kinda lost control of them.
Well, they went, they went down, no, they went down to the roadside park down below the Dairy Queen, and there used to be a roadside park down there, and the first weekend, there was a stabbing down there. Kid got cut.
You see kids over Walmart parking lot and over Kroger, and as long as they're not bothering you.
No, but I can tell you right now, those two, like, those two particular businesses have somebody watching the parking lot.
That's what I mean, I'd rather be on those.
And, and they will, they will call the law enforcement to come move them out of their parking lot.
And that's something else, we need to have some foresight when we're doing this ordinance, likely or not, Metro's coming this way, so we need to prepare for it. I'd rather be prepared for it than have to react to it. And I think if we can kinda make sure that we look at stuff that we know might not be here now, such as graffiti, as he said, you know it's coming, so we need to be ready for it.
But I think after you take the time to read this, that it's not bad, it's not a bad ordinance, but you need to read it so you know what, what all the issues that you're addressing pertain to. So.
And this a little bit more of a grass cutting ordinance.
Oh yeah, it is, absolutely, it is. It is. It is, it deals with, it deals with property in general and the way that different situations lend themselves, just like I said, like a disorderly house where you got, every weekend, somebody's going out there and getting drunk and, or doing drugs or something like that, and then first thing you know, we got an overdose, and we could've done something about it and maybe protected somebody's life, you know?
What are we gonna run, what are we gonna run into if, say it's a elderly couple that's not physically able and financially able, and what do we?
Well, you're gonna have a lot of that, you're gonna find out what you're looking at.
Is that just all under discretion of the city manager?
Well, you can't treat one and not treat them all.
That's exactly right, that's why, that's why I posed that question.
And I, and I say that because, let's just say that I don't have the money to paint my house today, and I haven't had the money to paint it in 10 years.
About every month, about every month, in the council meeting, we have a. About every month, about every month, and the council meeting, we have a, uh, water, water, uh.
Application.
Application for these rates, so, you know, can't pay, can't, it's hard to pay the water bill.
Certainly hard to cut the crap.
What's their property owner, that, I mean, their property owners?
I, I, I mean, I'm.
But if, but if, say that, say that the debris, um, on the property, um, is causing things like rodents and.
Like the mosquitoes.
Disease, or what, we have mosquitoes or whatever that is. I mean, I mean, there's a place in this county that should have been closed years ago and is still operating today because they've got so many septic tanks on the property, it runs out in the road, and it still does today. And, um, um.
Man, I just, I just brought that up.
My wife grew up right next to it, and, uh, uh, we'd walk out in the backyard and the sewage was all in the ditch. Still is today.
The only reason I brought that up is because, you know, if this is the way, if this is what we think we need to do when it comes time to vote on this, you need, you need to understand that probably sometime in the future, there's gonna be somebody in that council chamber that's gonna have, that's not gonna be happy with this simply for the fact that, put it with the, the fact that they're elderly, they're not.
Hardship.
But they're not physically capable or financially capable.
The ability to do, Tony, is they can always ask for help.
That's right. So the city organization, to hell, we can help.
We have had people ask for help, and the city's provided it. Uh, in the time that I've been here, and, I'm not, Bill would probably be unhappy when I did it.
And I know when the boy.
But, uh, tree fell down someone's yard, and he was in a wheelchair, there was no way he could clean it up. City went and cleaned it up. Uh, and, you know, I would think the city of Jasper is gonna continue doing that stuff.
City, they're in churches.
Churches, because that's what I'm saying, my little boys, when they were little, they was an elderly person, had a bunch of limbs and stuff, and they went and cleaned that yard up. He did a better yard than they can clean mine.
Look, I cut three of my neighbors' grass, their yards, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, I did that for twenty years in the neighborhood. Got me a new neighbor.
All right.
Y'all, I don't mean to be running out, but I've got something I got to do at six thirty, and it's already past that. Y'all got any more questions than me?
Can, can I make a, does everybody have this, the all council members have?
You have the one that I put in Jasper?
I don't have Jasper.
You can just send a copy of Jasper.
I'll email it to you all the time.
Let me have it, I'll distribute it to mayor and council.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
And I'll also be giving you a, uh, ordinance, a draft of an ordinance that Lonnie and Greg have requested. Bill, I'll send it to you also, but a pet in vehicles ordinance, pets in vehicles ordinance.
I wanna see how you come out of them.
Greg, uh, Greg is wanting some, some protections on what he can do. What's needed, I've called twice on our Walmart parking lot on vehicles with, you know, pets in there, and I have to stay by.
Well, you mean, left in the hot cars, that was the stomach?
Yes. So I'll get something else for consideration on that too.
All right.
And I'm sure Bill will wanna add or delete or whatever.
I'll tell you a little funny story, real short. Debbie and I were eating over at the, um, Able Age Restaurant one, I told them, go take your lunch one day, it'll be nice for a change. So we went in and there was somebody, there was somebody in there that I thought, oh, I just don't wanna be there. But we didn't, I just walked on in, played like I didn't see them. Went in, sat down, first thing you did, come back there, and he was already shot. And we went outside after staying in there and trying to get away from him for forty minutes. Didn't even hardly eat anything, we just kind of got him, left and walked out there, and he had eight dogs out there in the back of his pickup truck. Two of them had jumped off and hung themselves.
Wow, that's bad.
Good to see y'all.
You too, thanks.
Uh, that's definitely something that's a good concern. I mean, I mean, I just, between dogs and, and people with kids, I heard on the news, they had one chap.
Well, the law there is pretty clear.
Oh, it seems to be. The bad part about, the bad part about all this is, in a proper sense, our looking.
All ordinances you put in place, you still, the ordinance is still not gonna fix you.
No, but what it does is give Greg some protections. And I'll be honest. In things that, that he needs to be able to do in that situation.
Clarification.
Clarifications.
Because we don't have anything right now.
Yeah, the, the two times called mountain, they sat by in the vehicle when Walmart announced the owner of a, you know, vehicle come out, and they just tell them, don't do that again. I mean, they're very limited right now as to what they can legally do. As law enforcement officers, they, they don't have an ordinance in place to securely give them a pathway to follow to do their job, and they need that. And, you know, if it's a child, they can enter the vehicle, everybody knows that. If it's a dog, then it's a different situation, so. For now. Yeah, for now. So, Bill will get that to me, I will have an electronic copy, I can send to all of you, mark it up, uh, and we'll continue with the process.
You remember, this is just a generic, it's, it's a place to start. We can always change or add later on.
Alter as we need to. Well, I think any ordinance gets stale. Maybe that's not the best word.
Needs to be updated.
Needs to be updated. Things change.
Things are changing, yeah.
And we know this, everybody does, it's coming, it's a big wave about to come up here, so we need to be ready.
All right, go ahead.
Well, Bill ain't here, but the Swanee ordinance is one that's been in, used for over ten years.
Been Swanee?
Swanee, and I think it's, it's, it's a good ordinance, I really like it.
It's very thorough.
It is very thorough, it's very descriptive.
Hold me have a copy of that one?
That's, that's the one I said without.
It is basically.
Well, let me get that one, or maybe I, maybe I'll only print this one.
No, that's one I gave you. Gave you somehow. I'll see, I can tell from the clips on it. Yeah, the.
I'm gonna use this one, and it sent me this one.
Oh, okay.
But this is already approved ordinance, it's legally enforced ordinance. I don't know if you saw, but Swanee was basically in the same shape we were twenty years ago. And they came in there and they have really, it's, they've really fixed it up nice. Now, I don't want us to be Swanee, I want us to be Jasper, but I don't mind borrowing good ideas, and they had some good ideas in there. Uh, it goes back to making ourselves look presentable, and if we're gonna grow, we've gotta look presentable.
Appealing?
Yes. And it is in depth too, I mean, it's detailed. Uh, my understanding, when they did do it, they had talked about doing facade, the council person I talked to, said they had only gonna do the facade on three sides of the building. They said, nobody cares what the backside of the building does. Well, had one councilman, said, no, we want it on all four sides, we want it to look this way. And he said, they all reluctantly agreed. And they said, no, he's glad he did because from where they had put a bunch of buildings, they came and built a whole bunch more buildings over here, and they would have had to look right at the, the back end, I mean, you're still gonna see meter bases.
There are multiple facilities in Jasper. Right there.
So we have nothing in place now, either way on this?
No, we, we are limited to ever what the covenants are at the, where they're at.
And covenants in some of the areas are pretty strenuous. I know when my daughter built her building, contractor was very upset that he had to put brick on so many sides, but I, you know, we did, and, uh, she's got a nice building because of it.
And if, if you get a chance, look at the Dollar General down on five fifteen, and then look at the Dollar General up here, there's a big time difference of how much better it looks.
Oh, I saw one the other day on TV, I think, that looked, it looks almost like a barn, it really looked, it looked pretty nice. It had a, a cut-up ceiling, a roof, so that it was, um, it really looked pretty decent.
If you go out and hold Brooke Cap'n around and keep going over, just go straight out to that first four-way stop there, that caution light. There's Publix over here to the left, it's, it's done like that, a lot of wood, a lot of, a lot of metal, a lot of, a lot of, it, it's that whole community there, really done it well, a lot of spat rock, you know, I mean, it's just, there are a lot of different things that stand out in the little community group, it's nice.
And the guy I talked to at the GMA said, some cities say you have a certain thing. You know, some, like, if you go to Avenue of Estates, they have their own look, you go to Helen, they've got their own looks. They said the same thing here, you could say, you wanna look like the forties, fifties downtown, like our downtown looks, but make it look neat, make it look modern, make it look clean, and that will appeal.
What was that city on the coast, all around Augusta, when was it that meeting?
The coast at Augusta.
Uh, yeah, the little town with the lady, one of the teachers, it was her town, I remember she talked about it, what they had done. She had showed pictures of the town, it looked awful, and now it looks like, wow, you know, they've done a lot. Hot damn, she was one of the teachers, not the guy from Swanee.
I'm still confused with, uh, Augusta being on the coast.
Well, it ain't on the coast, but.
He's just trying to run it there.
I was guarding the flood.
That would give me a headache.
But, uh.
I kept. There wasn't no water near there while I lived there.
Yeah.
Other than the river, isn't it?
All right. Read that. Yeah, I will get it out to you, give you something to read, and we'll, uh, continue on. We do have a guest with us. If you wanna introduce yourself to everyone, everyone knew what you're here for.
Well, another shorter time.
Well, that's all right, you go right ahead.
And I have a number of ordinances considered already. My name is John Cannon, I have talked with Kirk a number of times about my two little dogs gonna have a heart attack if these fireworks don't stop. And I would really like for the council to look at the overall situation and, and since the law has been changed to allow cities to have their own ordinance in regard to towns and see, you know, what y'all thought and, uh, uh, and other than that, right now, I'd like for the police department to know what the new changes are. Because I, I called on July fifth because, as I understood, the new change was that other on, other than the fourth of July and on New Year's, that the deadline to stop was nine o'clock. And at nine thirty, they were going like crazy on July fifth. And the police officer told me that other than the fourth of July and on New Year's, that you could do it any time of the day you wanted to, that there was no limitation as part of the time. But we did real well with, with our two pets on the fourth, much better than I have in the past. But on the fifth, I didn't expect anything like that, and it was the same thing all over again.
Where's, where do you live at? Where do you live at?
Uh, I live off the Hood Road.
So he's back, uh, near the three of us, uh, once he crosses over the creek at the bottom of the hill, what's the name of your subdivision?
Uh, Mountain Brook.
Mountain Brook, right there on the right.
Jordan Lane, right there just past the creek. But, um, and I know I'm not the only person in the city that has that problem because when I called the police, he was already aggravated because he told me that he'd had over two dozen people called him on the night of the fourth. And, you know, we will deal with it, I mean, if we have to on these holidays, we'll go out of town on them. But I would like for, you know, whatever the rules are, to be, uh, complied with. And I don't know why it still continues, but on Saturday night, the seven, Saturday night, the seventh, they feel worse than they were on either of those other two nights. And it has continued every Saturday night since. Now, now, last Saturday night, it was very brief, it's only like, you know, a very few minutes. But, um, I don't think I'm the only person that has that problem with, with, with the pets. So I really would like the council to look at it and see, uh, you know, I know it's the law and abide by whatever, but when there have been some adjustments made, I'd like for that to be recognized by the police department.
So I believe what we discussed is we would make sure that we're on the same page, uh, we'll, we'll look at the state law, what they have set forth. It's, it's pretty clear, and then we'll just touch basically the chief of police, I'm sure that they have the updated version. And we'll just make sure that we're, we're educated on the hour end.
Yeah, and then we also have a noise ordinance at ten o'clock.
We do.
Yeah, but, but fireworks cease at nine, the noise ordinance, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be shooting at ten.
If I had a child or anyone that shot open in that neighborhood, I'd.
Well, you're not thinking, well, I had them in my yard where they're shooting.
The problem is, when the state changed all that, they, they should have put a lot more thought into that, where they changed that.
I agree, because they open the door up on there.
And so I, I stand by, I believe I will look at it, give it to the police department, the chief, make sure we're on the same page as the.
Well, and, you know, I'd appreciate, you know, just looking into, to the whole situation.
Well, basically, I mean, basically, all I would be able to do is whatever, whatever the state says.
Yes.
We understand.
We can, we can.
We can understand the state.
The, the police officer was short with me, and I got short with him. Because it's what he told me, you know, he told me I didn't know what I was talking about when I said that it had to cease at nine o'clock. And then he tells me that, that, uh, a local law cannot supersede a state law. I said, I'm sixty-five years old, I know that, uh, you know, uh, but maybe there are not that many people that have pets, I don't know. But when, if I know that it's going to happen, I have a medication I can give to one. I mean, the problem with him is so bad, it's almost like he's having a seizure. And it takes forever, even once they cease, to get them calmed down, to go to bed. And they don't even wanna go outside, go to the bathroom for their last time because the noise has come out, so.
So, yeah, we'll certainly look at that.
You know, and, and just looking at it and seeing, and I know it has to be, has to comply with what state law is, it's a law, and we will, we will abide by it. But, uh, I appreciate looking into it.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe, maybe we won't have much again until Labor Day anyway, I don't know. But, um, I mean, do you, do you, I mean, you're aware there's a lot of it goes on up there?
Yeah.
The three of us live very close to ye, and so we're, we're aware.
And I do, and this is not a city problem because, well, we're right on the edge of the city. But I have a piece of vacant property at the end of, of the next street off from there. And last year, there was people over there doing it on that property. And of course, this year, I haven't noticed it this year, but, uh, the, we've had a lot of rains, there wouldn't probably be that problem. But it's very woody, the piece of property is, and there's a real danger of a fire getting going. I'm afraid if it was dry weather when that was happening. So it, I don't know, I, it just seems that maybe a lot of people in the city and the county too, uh, feel like now that it's legal, it's legal to do it whenever they want to. So, you know, I really don't understand why the, well, I guess because it's personal to me and it's not to a lot of other people. But it looks to me like it's a little bit of a story would be worthy of the progress, printing some little article about the law.
And that goes back to educating the public, and we discussed that. And so that's something, once we know what state law says, we'll set a movement.
Yeah, all right, I appreciate it, and I appreciate if you have to come.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Yeah, you know, I'm glad, good to find out y'all are my neighbors too.
Well, I don't know about all that. You don't know him as well as for his. You know, Ann really likes fireworks, she shoots them all. Gives you death.
All right.
I think it's been worse this year than it's ever been.
I think that's.
Well, because they've opened the doors so wide.
We are in middle of the week holiday.
Yeah, and that was the time. I can't, I go out of town on the holiday, but I can't do it for a month at a time.
Yeah.
A little bit expensive. Well, they don't blow them all up, so they figure they're gonna.
Yeah.
I don't know how they not blow them all up though. They started three.
Where's the closest store?
Forth.
Yeah.
Walmart.
Walmart.
Oh, really? They were selling them at Walmart.
Yeah, they were selling them.
Well, what we can, what we can do, we can get, we can get Chief a little, get him to sit down, and I'm sure he knows the, the times. to sit down, and I'm sure he knows the, the times.
Absolutely.
And if we can, surely maybe at our, our next council meeting, if it's addressed, some of the press that happens to be present might get a little press time.
And that's the big part, is with the, with the use of the press and the media, educating our public and our constituents, that's a huge part, so if we can just let them know what the law states very clearly, I think we'll go a long way with just that.
And also the courteous service on the, on the interaction, that's...
See, a lot of people aren't aware how stressful it is to pets, I mean, it really is stressful to pets.
Yeah.
And veterans.
Yes.
Is that what you said?
All right.
Thank you, Jim.
This is a record, folks.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, yes.
Two ordinances, that's great.
All right. Well, we're gonna do it again next Thursday night?
Yes.
Just as a reminder?